Well, I could, but the mic system is not working. It says I'm on, but...
You're on.
Okay, now it's working.
You got normal.
Just click mine to see if it's working.
Oh, okay.
Good. All right. We'll call our meeting to order. I would like to begin by acknowledging that we are in Mi'kmaqgee in the District of Sabaginagadi, the ancestral and unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq people. East Hans further acknowledges the 50 African Nova Scotia communities whose 400-year history have contributed to the province's culture, history, and legacies. We are all treaty people. We'll now have a moment of silent contemplation. Next, we have the approval of or amendments to the agenda. Does anyone have any amendments or additions to the agenda? Seeing none, I will declare it approved. Next, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of council for policy and in-camera held March the 18th, 2025, and the regular meeting of council held March 26, 2005. Are there any errors or omissions to the minutes? Seeing none, I declare them approved. Next, we'll go to correspondence for information. Correspondence is in front of you, folks. Is there any item under correspondence from information that anyone wishes to draw attention to? Counselor Merrim.
Thank you. A question about item number one on pesticides and aerial spraying. In the correspondence, the province mentions that they do notify municipalities in regards to the aerial spraying. And I'm sure we've talked about this before, but can... maybe this is a question through Madam Warden and the staff about what do we do again with aerial spraying notification? I'm assuming we maybe make a post on our website, but can you just remind me, once we get that notification, how we treat that information, please?
Okay, folks, who's looking at this one? Don't all jump at once. Just say...
Through you, Madam Warden. There hasn't been a direct staff notification of aerial spraying for East Hans in the recent past that I'm aware of. If there was a time where there was land across from the George Field Waste Management Center that there was spraying at one point, and there was some correspondence back and forth with Nova Scotia Environment on that at that point, but that was several years ago and I haven't heard back anything since. So, the referral of notifications to the municipality, it's unclear from a staff perspective what that entails, to be honest, because it's not obvious. It's not a direct note to the CAO's office that's then shared. I would suggest it may be a post on the website through the province somewhere that if you went and looked, you could find it, is my assumption. But there's nothing official, and I've been here a while.
Okay. You know, maybe a follow-up on that is it kind of... The tone of the letter was, "We're letting you know, and you can do with it as you wish." I'm wondering, you know, could it be that maybe there's a disconnect on that end about how they're sharing information and what kind of information they are sharing? So, not on our end, but it just sounded like, "We're letting you know." Could it be, you know, I mean, is it worth going back and looking for some clarification on that issue?
I would suggest if you'd like to make a motion, asking to send a letter to clarify how the communication works.
Yes, I'd be more than willing to make that motion. So, in light of that topic, I'll make the motion that staff on behalf of council send a letter back to the province, asking for clarification in terms of what that notification is.
Seconded by Counselor Rhino. Is there any discussion on the motion? Now, I have two people who are on to speak. If you have discussion on the motion, if maybe you'd raise your hand so I know you're on the motion. Okay. And then we'll go back, if it's okay, to other topics. Counselor Mitchell.
Yes, I'd be interested to see how much wind drift is... happens when they're spraying. If it's forest land, that could be near somebody's residential property and how that affects their well water, groundwater, or livestock, et cetera. Thank you.
Did we want that included in the letter?
Well, it could be most likely...
Say clarify. So, there's no ambiguity or whatever?
The mover's okay with that and the seconded? I guess the motion belongs to all of us now. Does anyone object to that being included? All right, back to correspondence for information. Counselor Dixon.
Do we have to vote on that?
I'm sorry. Second meeting. We'll go to the vote. And the motion is passed unanimously. Now, over to you, Counselor Dixon.
Thank you. Through the warden, I guess. Item number 59, fire service, was sent out by... I brought up the wrong one here. Just wondering, it sounds like the provincial government is asking us to do something that they should be doing. Because I feel the municipality takes us on, and we come up with things that have to be done, we're going to be taking a lot of responsibility. I think we should throw it right back in their lap with a letter or some report and ask them for more clarification and for them to lead it.
I think they intend to lead it, but they've asked us, offered us an opportunity for input, but they've given us no information on how to provide any input.
Yeah, thank you. Through you, Madam Warden. The way we're interpreting this letter and just from some of our correspondence at the staff level, the province is working with FSANS, the Fire Service Nova Scotia... Fire Service Association of Nova Scotia, to complete an overall review of the fire service levels across the whole province. As part of that, I think in the third paragraph of the letter, it lists kind of some of the objectives or outcomes around operations, communications, governance. There's various fire service models, as we know, in every municipality across the province. And so, what this report, from my understanding, the RFP is out in the marketplace right now, is going to take a look at some previous studies that have been done in the province over numerous decades, so look at the past studies, also completed a current study, and then make some recommendations back to the municipal government. Now, the third last paragraph in the letter is kind of the important piece, I think, that we're drawing on here tonight, is we strongly encourage municipalities to participate in governance review and provide your feedback. So, what we're doing at a staff level is actually reaching out to FSANS to understand what that mechanism is for council and municipality to be able to be engaged and at the table for this process. So, I do think it's more of a broad study across the province, is the way we're looking at it. But it may have some, absolutely some direct implications to how fire service is delivered in your community and our communities. And we want to be part of that conversation with FSANS and the province.
And I have another question here is on number 65 from Minister Tilly with regards to K-class roads. I guess I'm not making friends with the provincial government tonight, but that's all right. That, I was concerned involved with this mainly because the one in Ranfur Road would be an alternate exit for in case of fire, because there we have one way in with 172 residents, that this would be an option. So, I would like to ask if we could have staff maybe to resend a letter to them explaining our situation with this one particular road to see if the minister would have any difference of opinion on that. I'm looking for comments, or you're the chair, I guess.
Staff have any... John? Whoops. I'm trying.
Okay. Through you, Madam Warden. We can. The original letter that we sent was more of a general one to see if they would engage us in the topic of K-class roads and, you know, their use for emergency access. But if you want us to send one specific to Enfield, we can do that.
I would like, because it's going to help in the occasion of emergency for the people in that one area, because they've got 172 residents out of there. It's going to be chaos in an emergency. I'd like to make that a motion, please.
Could you maybe word your motion for staff, Counselor?
Make a motion that staff send the letter back to the minister, Tilly, with regards to the road that's in Malcolm, I'm sorry, Ranfur Road, to explain the situation where there's a fire service for emergency use.
Do we have a seconded? Seconded by Counselor Hebbs. Now, I have a number of people on to speak. I have no way of knowing who wishes to speak to the motion and who wishes to speak to something else. Counselor Hebbs to the motion. Anyone else to the motion? Okay. So, we're in order then. Counselor Hebbs.
Thank you, Madam Warden. In response to the motion, reading the letter, there's two avenues that we sent requests on, and basically, one was to give access to emergency EMO for fire, for accidents. There's a lot of ATV use out there and stuff. A lot of the roads, if they just replace some of the culverts and stuff and do the bushes, would be great. A lot of the roads you don't want to touch. And the other avenue of that was for the second access. And it's not only Ranfur, there's probably other roads that are available too. And according to the letter, is that the government says, "Okay, yeah, you can do it. You fix it up and take it over, and we'll do it." That's downloading it on the municipality. And this is the residents of the municipality that we're trying to help here. And this is what the province wants us to do, to look after residents, and not to come back with a response saying, "Okay, let's sit down and let's talk about this. What roads need done?" That's the kind of stuff that we would like to see. And I think the motion probably should... well, no, I'll just leave it at that, say. Thank you.
Counselor Perry.
Thank you, Madam Warden. To the motion, in support of the motion, but like was stated already, there are plenty of other roads that would fall into this. I can think of the Beemish Road, Uniac Mines Road connection that also leads to Uniac Mines Road. And now, you're looking at well over 400 to 500 homes that are affected by that linkage, not to mention linking east and south Uniac in a way there. And that's just the one off the top of my head, because I know during our plan review and during some of the things where we've looked at secondary access to some of the areas that are hampered by development due to the one access, we started to compile a list. And I'm wondering just how many other roads in that list that we've already identified that would fall under the same thing as the two that were mentioned here tonight. And I don't know if we need to also have, like, staff look and compile a list of the roads that would fit the same criteria as what was presented tonight, and it all go in one motion rather than, you know, us sending six letters to the minister over the next three months as we keep bringing them up as motions from council.
Any thoughts, John?
We could, but now, this sounds more like the original letter that we sent, which was kind of to talk about the general issue. But I guess one thing I don't think we did in that original letter is actually list the roads. We just talked about K-class roads and how they could be used, so...
Because I think if we highlight the roads, like Counselor Dixon did, you know, saying 175 residents, right? And you start counting the residents, and you put numbers and people to this, when you put numbers and people, you also put numbers and voters. And that there can resonate a lot better with people in the provincial government than just like saying, "Oh, we want this road." So, I think if we were to look at it and see which roads were identified in that previous study that sent the previous letter, and then look at the number of residents impacted and link that to each road, it would allow the province to have more information. Because I think just by listing the roads themselves, they really don't know, "Okay, yeah, there's all these roads, but what's the impact? What's the potential cost of human life and infrastructure and anything else?" Because, you know, we all want to avoid anything that can become a mass casualty situation and provide the best access for our first responders, firefighters, and emergency services to access areas to help people when they're in trouble. So, I'm just asking you, John, would it be easy? Because I'm willing to make an amendment to the motion to include that.
Take your seats, and staff will get us back online again. Okay, welcome back, everyone. I would just report we did have a technical malfunction with our system, but we are back. I was going to turn the mic back to Counselor Perry, but I see he's not with us at the moment. So, I think if those who were on, Counselor Moose, I believe you were on next, I will go to you while we...
Thank you, Madam Warden. Same as Counselor Hebbs and Counselor Perry. There's all kind of roads that we be... staff should be looking at. And when we wrote them a letter, did we ask them to maintain them or make them like just accessible for, just in case of emergency? Because there's a big difference maintaining them and bring them up to standard is much more costly than just making them like clear, make sure that they are drivable, like, could be a dirt road without any high-cost maintenance. So, I don't know what the letter stated, but as long they're accessible, I think it's better than us taking them and upgrading them or just leave them as the way they are, so...
John?
If I remember correctly, I don't have the letter in front of me, but it was basically an invitation to dialogue on the issue of K-class roads and whether, and I think we did actually request that, you know, they would have to be maintained to be able to be used for emergency access.
Okay, so just to refresh us, folks, the motion that's on the floor is for one specific K-class road. We're having some discussion that there are perhaps other ones that are equally important. So, I guess before we go to the vote, we will need to decide if we're happy with the current motion for one road and see how that goes, and then attempt more, or if someone wishes to make a motion to amend the existing motion. Counselor Perry, back to you.
I would like to propose an amendment to the motion. I propose that staff take the previous report identifying K-class roads that could be used for emergency services and include them in the letter to the Minister of Public Works, also outlining the number of residents affected or potentially affected if these roads would be opened up or not opened up.
Moved and seconded. Okay. Any discussion on the amendment? Okay, over to you, Kim.
Through Madam Warden, I would also recommend that council copy the Minister of Emergency Management, as this could turn into, from Transportation, Public Works, we're not responsible for roads, but we are responsible for people's safety. So, either write it to the Minister of Emergency Management or copy the Minister of Emergency Management.
I would definitely add copy the Emergency Management. And I'm also wondering if we should copy the Minister of Municipal Affairs, where the previous thing with the Nova Scotia Guard was there, and they were worried about the public safety and how our fire services could assist in that, if copying all three of those would be pertinent or seen effective by staff.
Staff, I see they're shaking their head.
Okay, so I'll add that to my amendment, that it will be also copy the Minister of Emergency Services and the Minister of Municipal Affairs.
Okay. Any further discussion to the amendment? Okay, we'll go to the vote, and this is on the amendment. And the amendment has passed unanimously. We are now having discussion on the amended motion. I would ask the deputy warden if he would take the chair.
Certainly.
I guess just a comment, and I haven't been here since 1995, but I've been here since 1997. So, the service exchange was still fairly new when I was a rookie. And absolutely, all new roads, you know, became the responsibility of municipal governments under service exchange. But it's just maybe semantics, but myself, I do not look at existing provincial roads that existed prior to 1995 and service exchange, whether they were K-class roads or what class roads they were. They were provincial roads, they are provincial roads, they are provincially maintained. And I do not believe that service exchange divested the province of any abilities or responsibilities around K-class roads. And those are just my comments. Thank you.
Okay, back to you, Warden.
No one else wishing to speak, we'll go to the vote. The motion is passed unanimously. All right, back to correspondence for information. Back to you, Counselor Dixon.
Thank you. Back to item number 59 with regards to the fire service review. I think the motion that council write Minister Marston, seeking clarification on how municipalities will be engaged in the fire service review process.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. And the motion is passed unanimously. Now, also on correspondence for information, there is a letter there. I'm not... Number 23, I believe, concerning the additional officer program. Just for a refresher, I'm going to turn it over to the CAO to give us a little update on that. I don't believe it does affect us, but...
Thank you, Warden. No, so we get this letter, and we do have a school safety resource officer. I dug back into our archives from 2007 when we put that position in place. And our school safety resource officer is actually one of our 28 positions that you fund. Back then, we created, we added another officer, called it the School Safety Resource Officer in exchange for free office space at the school that was owned by the province at the time and some other rentals. and some other rentals from schools at the time. Those rentals no longer exist, yet we continue to fund that officer for the school safety officer. So I just want to let council know that this doesn't actually impact our safety resource officer and I've written to the R C M P and let them know that and provided them with the history of that transaction because it's probably long since forgotten at Department of Justice. So that's just an update.
Thank you. Anything else on correspondence for information? We are at the time for our public hearing, so we will return for correspondence for decision following the public hearing. Okay, councilors, this evening we have one item on the public hearing agenda. The purpose of this hearing is for council to hear input from the public prior to making a decision on the proposal. To the members of the public who have chosen to participate this evening, welcome. Please note that council's procedural policy requires that you not cheer, boo, clap, or otherwise disrupt this hearing. Anyone who wants to comment or ask questions will be provided an opportunity to do so. Tonight, council may approve, reject, or defer its decision on the proposal to a later date. Council approval is required for the proposal to proceed. I will now ask the municipal clerk to outline when the public hearing advertisements were published.
Madam Warden, a public hearing notice appeared in the April 9th and 16th editions of the Chronicle Herald. The notices described the proposal, gave the date and time of the public hearing, and indicated that staff reports were available to the public.
Thank you. Councilors, the public hearing this evening is for a proposal to amend the subdivision bylaw. I would now ask the planning, ask the Chair of the Planning Advisory Committee to present his report.
Planning Advisory Committee has considered the proposal on behalf of municipal council. The committee has received staff's report, completed their evaluation, and will make a recommendation to council during this hearing. Madam Warden, through you, I would now ask staff to present their final report on the proposal.
Thank you, Madam Warden. So the municipality is requesting an amendment to the subdivision bylaw to include a required connection from the Elmstale Business Park to the neighboring properties to the rear. The connection is proposed to come from Park Road and connect through P I D 452-48192 to P I D 452-72861 to require any future development of these lands to have a connection through to Park Road. So this is the required future transportation connections map from the subdivision bylaw. So this is the proposed connection here in red. The green connections are already existing within the map in the subdivision bylaw. So it's just to add this, this connection here. So staff have referred to the municipal planning strategy policies when reviewing the proposed amendments to the subdivision bylaw. A public information meeting is required for any standalone amendment to the subdivision bylaw as per the Municipal Government Act, and council's decision is not appealable to the Nova Scotia Utility and Review Board. And as part of the process, planning staff did receive comments from Nova Scotia Public Works and their comments indicated the department did not have any concerns with that location of the proposed connection. There was an advertisement indicating this was under review in the Chronicle Herald and there was a public information meeting required. So we did mail out letters to all property owners within 300 meters. And the meeting was held on November 5th and there was one member of the public that attended that meeting, represented the affecting, representing the affected property. And then we did mail out letters and questionnaires to all property owners, again, within 300 meters. So 38 were sent out and two were returned. The responses reflected the desire for the lands to remain undeveloped, to protect the environment and the animals in the area. The responses were not directly related with the amendments being proposed. And a notice of tonight's public hearing, again, appeared in the April 9th and 16th editions of the Chronicle Herald as well as posted on the municipal website and social media. And again, we mailed out letters to all residents within 300 meters indicating the date, time, and location of tonight's meeting. So staff have reviewed the proposal to amend the subdivision bylaw to include the required connection to Park Road and the proposed amendments were evaluated using all applicable policies and staff are recommending the amendments be approved. Thank you, Madam Warden.
Thank you. Does any member of council have any questions for staff? Seeing none. I would now ask if the applicant has any comments or would like to make a presentation. I will now open the floor for comments and questions. If you are viewing the YouTube livestream, you may use the YouTube chat feature which is being monitored. First, does anyone attending in person have any questions or comments? Seeing none. Does any member of the public have any questions or comments through the live chat on the YouTube livestream? No. Does any member of staff have any final comments? I would now ask the Chair of the Planning Advisory Committee to present his committee's recommendation.
Planning Advisory Committee recommends that council give second reading and approve an amendment to the subdivision bylaw to include a required connection with Park Road through P I D 452-48192 to connect to P I D 452-72861 Elmstale. As Chair of P A C, I shall move.
We have a seconder? Does any counselor have any final questions or comments? We will go to the vote. Oh, sorry, did someone... We'll go to the vote. And the motion has passed unanimously. This concludes tonight's public hearing and I would thank you for attending. So councilors, returning to our agenda, we will go to correspondence for decision. Okay, correspondence requesting deferral of council's refusal for 427 Highway 214 Elmstale. Correspondence is in front of you, councilors. Counselor Tingley.
Actually, I was not on to speak about that. I thought we were gonna be able to choose whichever one we wanted to speak to.
Okay, sorry. This is a request. We do have, we have not had our P A C report yet, but this is in relation to a request for a rezoning and then a development agreement amendment that P A C determined we were not recommending in favor of at committee. It has not yet come forward this evening. I would note that this correspondence refers to development agreement. The development agreement cannot be done with the zoning that is on the property at this point in time, so... I would be looking for a motion to either agree to defer that decision or to receive this correspondence and deal with the item when it comes up at P A C, which I think as we haven't made the decision at council tonight, would certainly be... Counselor Tingley.
I'll move to receive the, the letter and deal with it at P A C.
We have a seconder?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? We'll go to the vote. And the motion has passed unanimously. Okay, next item, the letter from the Tide Fest Volunteer Planning Committee Seeking Municipal Support. And the C A O would like to speak to this and then next on is Counselor Tingley.
Thank you, Madam Warden. So Alana's not able to be here today. She's away this week. She did post a memo for council's information, just with some history with respect to Tide Fest and whatnot. That is attached to your agenda. The other item that's attached to your agenda is a letter requesting municipal support for the Tide Fest Come Home East Hants, from the Come Home East Hants Society. I've had a few councilors ask how this could be accommodated and what the issues were. So as a reminder, when the Sportsplex was run by the East Hants Arena Association, the group paid, I think it was about $4,500 to rent the facility. I think at first it might have been at no charge. Last year, council kept it at $4,500, awaiting the pricing schedule for the facility. So that policy's now been in place and the group has been working with staff to figure out what they need with respect to the facility and what that rental would cost. So as you can imagine, with the commercial rates that are in place over the summer, even for, at the nonprofit rates, there is a significant increase in the rent that would be required for that facility for this festival. The initial sort of estimate of all the space that they've always used, I guess has been available to them, was about $18,000. And they've worked to say, well, this is what we, you know, we, we need the turf between this hour and this hour. We need this activity, that activity. I believe that's still probably fairly fluid, but they've worked it down to just under $10,000 of what the rental would be. There's no doubt that this facility or this festival is a huge economic driver for the community. There's a lot of participation. I think anyone who's been to the festival certainly sees its tourism implications for the municipality. And it would be, you know, to pare down the Tide Fest weekend because council was charging too much rent for the facility, I think would probably be not in alignment with your building strong communities and bringing your community together goals under your strategic plan. So asked how we could make this happen, we took a look at some of our budgets this afternoon. If you were to approve a grant to cover the rent above and beyond the $4,500 that they paid last year, that could be funded through a general government grant. With the budget for this year, there's lots of money left over in your tourism budget. We didn't have a fully subscribed tourism budget this year, so you could fund your general government grant with your tourism money. And I would recommend that if you, because we're still sort of working through some of the details, you could probably do in align with your major event grant. You've got lots of grant pots to, to refer to. The maximum there would be $10,000. So if you were to want to fund and support the group to keep their rent the same, I would recommend a general government grant of up to $10,000 based on the rent of that facility above the, the $4,500 that they've been paying. Sounds a little confusing, but it's all within your, your budget management policies and your grant policies. Again, if there's interest in doing that, from an accounting perspective, we can make that happen. But I'm also here, Wade's here, we can talk through any other scenario that council might see if you want to make this happen.
Thank you. Next up, Counselor Tingley.
Through the chair. So yes, I, I received a call from one of the people involved with Tide Fest and so I gathered some more information to try to understand it a little bit better. And I asked them about how many people attend Tide Fest. They didn't have the exact numbers when I spoke with them yesterday, but it's thousands of people over the course of the weekend that attend. And they have some musical events that they have 600, 800, 600 to 800 people attend. The, the event is for, invites everybody from all over the municipality to attend. Children, families, friends. Last year, some people from Sibonakety were involved and it'd be great if we could get them more involved. The businesses around, I understand, sponsor approximately $43,000 of the cost. Their budget looks like it's a little more than $100,000 income and approximately a little more than $100,000 expense. Part of their expense, they provide, 5% of their expense is donations to various charities. Cordura Community Options, Similec Food Bank, Sharing and Caring, Indian Brook Food Bank, East Hants Family Resource Center, East Hants Skating Club, Infield Rugby Club, and others. And the reason they give that donation is they help out with putting on the event. The... It looks like they will have to pare down this year if they don't get any help and they're actually concerned going forward that they might not be able to, to operate. And I think like the C A O says, it probably is desirable for the community to have this continue. And therefore, I'm gonna move that the municipality provide a tourism grant to Tide Fest up to $10,000 for their cost of renting the Sportsplex facilities in 2025 and based on Tide Fest contributing a minimum of $4,000 to the total invoice for renting the Sportsplex facility.
Mr. Clarification, 4,000. The C A O had mentioned 4,500.
Well, whatever that... I'm gonna make 4,000 because that's, that's, that's the amount that I understood from speaking with them that it is. That's, that's the information that was provided to me.
Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Heb. Now I have Counselor Perry, Counselor Rhino, and Counselor Mitchell on to speak. Are you speaking to this topic?
To the topic, yes.
Okay. Counselor Perry.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I am in full support of the Tide Fest Festival. I think it is, is a great thing for, for this area and for, and for the residents around here. I remember years ago, we, we did give them a number of years in a row, a $10,000 general government grant and then we stopped that because they were giving out $15,000 to $20,000 in donations to charities post the event. And these charities were decided by the committee, not predetermined or pre-decided beforehand. At that time, council said if we're giving $10,000 for an event and basically that money is just going through to charities, council would like to see that the charities that are all affected are, are done equitably. And, and that was the reason why that major event grant was stopped giving to Tide Fest because of that, of that purpose. And Tide Fest went on and continued and still made plenty of money and plenty of donations. I have absolutely no problem in, in where we are the owner of the facility, making a donation to help reduce the cost of, of the rental for it. I just, I don't want to see us go back to where we're giving $10,000 to an organization and that money is just gonna then be funneled to a set number of charities of, of the choosing. And, you know, there's plenty of, plenty of groups out, out there in the community that, that need help and if they're not on the list, they'll never be on the list. So I don't know how, what their criteria is. We've, we asked for it in the past. How they select which organizations receive the money and we never, and we never heard anything back. So I would just caution council of, of writing a blank check if the money is just gonna pass through the hands to different organizations and we don't know if every organization has a fair chance to receive the funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next up, Counselor Rhino.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Following along the lines of Counselor Perry, I can remember that that discussion was up and, and that was the exact same thing. You know, why are we giving a grand out that it's just gonna be filtered back out amongst different charities? Why don't we equal... Why don't we equal that up and give each one the same? I'm not saying that Tide Fest, you know, is not a great festival, but are we prepared to, when other festivals come up, give the same amount? And when I hear the words, "We can make this work," that sounds, that brings a hair up on the back of my neck, because it just seems like, oh, we'll make it work somehow, and I don't like that. I really don't.
I think what was meant by that counselor was that the funds for the rent, instead of giving the grant directly to the group, and the group giving it back to the Sports Plex, that it would be granted and that our staff would transfer the rent to the Sports Plex directly.
Well, nonetheless, that's how it came across, and it just made the hair on the back of my neck stand up. I caution you because, you know, what happens when the next great festival comes along? I hope we are as equal to them, you know, also if we're going to give money out here. I've got some revisions over this one. Thank you.
Counselor Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Warden. In full support of the Tide Fest adventure or project. Looking at their estimates, question is staffing, is that municipal staff, or is that staffing that they're providing is volunteers?
I am not sure. C A O?
I guess I would ask you to direct me in what part you're looking at.
I'm looking at the Tide Fest estimates for July two thousand and twenty-five, the fifth line. Staffing approximately three hundred, up, back, 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 right there. That their line.
They've revised it to zero, I believe.
I'm just curious if that's municipal staff that's going to be there, or theirs?
Through the municipal staff there will be paid for by the municipality through the rental income.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the second question through you, Madam Warden, is I don't see anything on there that deals with security. Is that an issue? I don't see, or?
Through you, Madam Warden. This is just the estimate for the facility.
Right.
They would bring their own security. That would be under a rental agreement.
Okay, thank you.
C A O, you had asked to speak. Counselor Tingley.
Through the chair. I certainly agree with Counselor Rhino and Counselor Perry's concerns regarding collecting money and providing fifteen or twenty thousand dollars to charities. My understanding is that's not what's been happening with this group the last while. They've been, it's been approximately five percent of their budget. But the other thing that I think should happen going forward is staff should probably be provided with a copy of their previous year's income and expense and their budget plans for the upcoming year, to better understand what we're dealing with here, type of thing. But for this year, this is the circumstance.
C A O?
Through you, Madam Warden. Any grant that is given of this nature, there's certain thresholds, but of this nature, would require financial reporting after the fact, full financial reporting by the group for the event and for the annual contribution. And that would include any monies paid out to, you know, in this case, their letter refers to five percent goes to the volunteers who contribute their time to run the festival. If that were five thousand dollars that was given to run the festival, that were staff time, that would also be included in that budget as a budget item. So anything that would go into this festival would need to be reported, paid staff and volunteer compensation.
Counselor Musa.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I'm on the same page as Counselor Rhino and Counselor Perry, and I still remember that when we stopped the ten thousand grant, it's because they always had surplus, and the grant was given as a jumpstart, if I remember, to start the whole event. But we found out that they have like thirty or forty thousand dollars. I wonder if that changed, or that's still the same, because there was a big reason when we stopped the ten thousand dollars. And I, as Counselor Tingley's saying, we should have some financial statement. And like, if somebody is making surplus, and like, it's good, it's always good for a nonprofit to be profitable and make surplus, but there was a reason for the ten thousand to be stopped, and I still didn't see any change in that reason. Thank you.
Counselor Gergen Cole.
Thanks.
No? Counselor Tingley.
Through the chair. The only thing else that I would add is, it was brought up, if this kind of a situation was happening in another area of the municipality, you know, how would we deal with it? I don't, I can't speak for every other council, but I'd look at it the same way as I'm looking at it here. You know, when I, this tourism grant, when we vote on this stuff, it's for other areas of the municipality, and I'm happy to vote on it in whatever area, and support Hans North or whatever other areas. The other thing I could ask, at least one, maybe two of the people that are involved in this organization are here, and if we wanted to clear up whether there's a thirty thousand dollar surplus, we could ask them, I guess, here, if that's permissible. My impression from speaking to them, that is not the case.
I'm going to go to the C A O before we...
Through you, Madam Warden. To the, council did make a decision a number of years ago to stop funding the sort of startup funds that they had given to this organization. The one difference that is coming forward this year is that the rise in costs that they're facing are coming directly from the municipality having a different price structure for these town sports plex. And we don't have as staff a mechanism to give them special rates or whatnot without coming to you. So that is the difference here. It's not that their costs have exceeded, or they're coming for a grant because they were told. There is no money for startups. You should be keeping some of your money and rolling it forward to next year, so when you start your new festival, you have funds in the bank. By the looks of this letter, that has happened. So the five percent for volunteer, that's not an unreasonable amount for people who come and work all weekend, for their own organizations to get those funds. So I think that's probably changed since that initial three-year period. The only difference this year, and the only reason that we looked at, well, how can we support this, is that council made a decision. Council changed the rates for the facility. So how do we then keep everything fair, yet support this organization in putting on this festival at the Sports Plex, which is the perfect place for it? It's the right place for it. So that is the difference. It's not, it's not a grant to fund the festival. It's a grant to cover the rent of the facility that they just didn't have before. That didn't exist in their prior year budget. So I did want to clarify that because it's not going back to the seed money as we were doing a number of years ago, because those motions were very clear and very direct. Council made a very distinct decision at that point to stop funding this festival. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Gergen Cole.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Yes, I was just going to comment along the same lines. I'm just seeing it as an amount to offset the increased cost of the rental, that it kind of equates to that. Might be a little more than what if they're, if they were used to forty-five, and it's now, they've got it pared down to eight hundred and, eight thousand and two hundred fifty dollars, or whatever, that this is just kind of offsetting it with a little, if you're going to go up to ten thousand, then it's a little more than that, but basically offsetting the increased cost. So I don't have any objections to that, and I can see the validity in having them come back with, you know, a budget on how it went. So that's my thoughts on it. Thanks.
Counselor Perry.
Thank you. Clarification, the current motion on the floor is to provide ten thousand dollars?
No.
Up to ten thousand dollars.
My understanding would be, yeah.
Mine is four thousand.
So it's, so whatever the rent is, and the charge will still be four thousand dollars, and then we'll cover the rest. Yeah. I have absolutely no problem with that, because like the C A O has outlined, this is a new cost expenditure. And organizations, when costs rise and things go up, they need at least a year to take this in as part of their planning process as well. So I have no problem with that. It's one of the things, this is a great event, you know, for East Hans. I don't want to have it come off that, you know, I'm against Tide Fest. I think it's great. We've supported it, you know. I don't know if we, if the municipality, if we currently do any sponsorship, or we do anything like that for municipal promotion during this event, or anything like that. That might be a request that could come in the future, and that'd be a different part of advertising or something like that. But as far as to offset the increased cost, I get it. We took over the facility. We have a different price point based upon what's needed in that facility to keep it safe for the public, and I'll support the motion.
And Counselor Rhino.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Well, there's a lot of discussion with regard around to cover the increased cost. You know, I look at it a different way. I look at it as if the municipality didn't jump in and take the Sports Plex, there wouldn't have been a Sports Plex, to have a cost in.
Counselor, we don't know that.
Well...
We don't know that, Counselor.
The facility could have been, could have went up for Sheriff's sale easy, and we would have lost everything.
Counselor, we do not know that. You're speculating.
Well, anyway. So that's my feelings on it, right there. And, you know, if we're going to give grants to help other festivals to use this facility, great. But I just, I just have reservations about this. Thank you.
Deputy Warden, could I?
Yes, certainly.
Well, we do have tourism grant funds, and within my memory here, I remembered when the municipality sponsored a large festival in the Kena Cook area for a number of years, the Kena Cook Days, and that was a big festival. They had Kena Cook Idol, they had the, I forget the name of the Regiment of Foot or something, reenactment of the original settlers that came to the Kena Cook area. It was a weekend festival, and it was a big festival, and council did support that festival for a number of years. And unfortunately, the volunteer base that ran that event eventually ran out of steam, and it was discontinued. So I view this as much the same way. It certainly does serve a large portion of the municipality. A number of people from my area attend Tide Fest every year. So with the advent of us taking over the Sports Plex and the increase in the rent being as large as it is, I do not have any issue supporting the motion. I would, I guess, we can't ask the members who are here to speak without the agreement of council. If council were agreed, I would just simply like to ask if they had any objection to making a full statement of revenues, expenses, and everything when the thing was over. And if not, I think that would provide us information going forward. And I'm seeing they're not speaking, but we've got a thumbs up on that. So those are my comments. I'm certainly prepared to support the motion. Thank you.
Okay, back to you, Warden.
Counselor Musa.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I'm not against this special event, but my concern is how that's going to affect all the other organizations that used to get special rate from the Sports Plex. We had discussion about those ones, so how that's going to affect, like, you cannot do it for one and not do it for all. And we all agreed on eliminating all that. So that's kind of confusing for me. I don't understand. Thank you.
C A O?
Through you, Madam Warden. I think if you looked at this as if, and that's really why it's coming across as a grant and not a reduction in fees from the Sports Plex, because it is important that you keep that integrity of that rate structure in place. Individual groups can always come to council and ask for support for events that they're throwing, and council will often give grants to, you know, tournaments or things like that that are happening in the community. So I think by keeping it as a grant, then that is a request to council. Council makes a decision on each individual, you know, event that's happening, and then can make that decision. So if this weren't at the Sports Plex, and rent was going up at whatever plex that they were renting from, then they may, they would still come to council, potentially, and say, you know, this is happening to our festival. It's really important to your strong community, building community connections, all of those things. Municipalities donate to these types of festivals all the time. So I think that is the difference. It's just that, it's not that we own the Sports Plex, it's that the rent is going up, and they need support for their facility. So I think that distinction is important. There's still a few things we need to work through with respect to the Sports Plex. You know, it's sort of, we're learning as we go, but that's how I would look at this.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one left to speak, we'll go to the vote. And the motion is passed by a vote of ten to one, with Counselor Rhino voting nay. Back to correspondence for decision. And the final piece is defined benefits pension plan, a request. I'm going to just let the C A O or whoever says, oh, Wade, I'm just going to let Wade explain this one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to indicate to counselors that it's my thought that you should approve this request for this other entity to join this reciprocal plan agreement for defined benefit plans. We're one member of a group of approximately sixteen or so different government entities that belong to this. And the concept is simply that members of these plans, if they move between other entities for employers, that they can, in fact, take their pension plan with them. And both for the pension plans that they're leaving and the one that they're renting, it's done so on a cost-neutral basis, and so no real cost to the employer of receiving or paying plan. So, yeah, that's my recommendation, unless the C A O has some other thoughts in that matter.
Thank you. Oh, do we have a recommended motion?
No, just that we approved the letter.
Well, someone prepared, deputy, or sorry, Counselor Perry.
I'll move that we send a letter in support. I believe that's what they're asking for, a letter in support of the Nova Scotia Education Common Services Bureau Pension Plan, wishing to join the public authorities' defined benefits plan in reciprocal transfer agreement.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Mario.
Thank you, Madam Warden. This might be to staff. I'm just wondering, with this transaction, for lack of a better word, is there any extra cost to our organization by doing this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the concept with these reciprocal agreements is that there's no actual cost to the plan. So if we, as an example, we received an employee from one of these other entities, they came here and they brought the pension benefits, they would bring the dollars from their pension plan to cover whatever they're able to purchase here from a service perspective. So our actuaries... our actuaries calculate all that, and, uh, you know, of course, in doing so, they have to make all sorts of assumptions, but that is standard practice for pretty much everything in a defined benefit pension plan, and, uh, other than that, you know, there's gonna be some transactional costs to figure out, you know, those costs and things like that. My understanding is that, uh, these have, do have a transactional cost associated with them, you know, actuaries' costs and things of that, and, uh, there are very few in far between, though, as I understand, for, at least for us, isn't any, because we're so small, in relative to all these other entities. Uh, to my recollection, I, while I've been here, I don't think we've had any, uh, of these reciprocal transfers in or out, uh, and so the dollars would be small, but my understanding is there is a fee that would be charged, and I believe it's either paid by the individual transferring or the pension plan that's, they're transferring from. That's my understanding.
Oh, okay, so that's helpful. So I mean, at, at the time of this happening, the actuary gets involved, they do some sort of conversion math.
Yep.
There's an adjustment made on the other side, you know, let's say years of service adjusted or, or whatever, so that the idea is, you know, it's not a, you know, in theory, it's not an extra cost to us. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Gergen Cole.
Hi, Madam Warden. Through, through you, uh, my employer and my position is actually listed on there, so I may, this may be a conflict of interest for me to vote on this.
You're declaring a conflict?
Yes. Do you want me to step away, or?
Into the galleries. And Cheryl Lee will take the book for you to sign. Any further, uh, C A O.
Um, through you, Madam Warden, just with respect to the additional cost Wade referred to, fees being charged for actuarial calculations to be done. Um, council had authorized the C A O to create a, um, pension fees policy through your own, you have a fees policy. You authorized me to create a pension fee policy of what we charge the staff for calculations outside of general statements for pension. So we do have, um, fees in there if we have to pay to have reciprocal agreement calculations done with respect to this agreement. So they would be around five hundred dollars for each in and out transaction, so the fees are covered if they're specific to an individual.
Seeing no one left to speak, we'll go to the vote. And the motion is passed unanimously by those voting. So that concludes correspondence for decision. We'll now move into the Corporate and Residential Services Committee report, and I will turn it over to you, councillor Gergen Cole.
The committee held its regular meeting on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, and the following motions are coming forward as a result of those meetings. First item, Code of Conduct, Appointment of Investigators. In February twenty twenty-five, the Association of Municipal Administrators, A M A N S, completed the request for quotations, R F Q, exercise to develop a list of qualified investigators to support municipal units and villages to meet obligations as a result of the provincially mandated Code of Conduct, and the Code of Conduct for Municipal Elected Officials Regulations, made under section five two zero of the Municipal Government Act. Each municipal unit must select an investigator and contract directly with the provider to provide investigative services under the code. The Corporate and Residential Services Committee recommends that council appoint M C Advisory Group Incorporated McGinnis Cooper as the primary Code of Conduct investigator, and Stuart McKelvey be appointed as a second option, and that the C A O is authorized to enter into three-year contracts with approved two-year extensions with both parties. As chair of the committee, I so move.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Motion is passed unanimously.
Corporate Residential Services Committee recommends the council send correspondence to minus.
Oh, sorry.
N S F M and the membership explaining that the platform N S C C used to sign up for and participate in the Code of Conduct course was not an easy process as it could have been. As chair of the committee, I so move.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, well, councillor Perry.
In our correspondence, uh, with regard to this, this Code of Conduct course, did we find out how much it cost or how much it was paid N S C C to create this course? Do we know how much that was?
No, we don't.
Because in my, in my day job, this is what we do, and, uh, to have it go through a portal and be made like that is probably two to three times the cost it could have been by single sourcing it to a, to a contractor that could have put it on each individual system. So, um, I de- I definitely think, I'm full support of this, but I think the next time we get, uh, with N S F M, uh, unfortunately, I'll not be able to, to attend the conference, but some of these questions should be asked about what these things are costing, and if they're going the most economical and best route to, uh, for user interface, um, because I don't know if this is, this was, uh, I'd have to see the, the contracting, but, uh, just from what I know, I would say this cost a lot more than could have been done by other sources. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Motion is passed unanimously.
Second item, Roberts Rules of Order. In order for any organization to function smoothly, it is critical that all members clearly understand its governing rules and operating principles. The council procedural policy outlines the operating principles and procedures for municipal council and council committees of the municipality of East Hans. Direction was provided to staff and another report will be brought forward to the committee with policy updates as a result of the discussion. Third item, canoe procurement request. The Canoe Procurement Group of Canada is a division of the rural municipalities of Alberta and is endorsed by the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities for use by Nova Scotia municipalities. Canoe essentially creates standing offers on various goods which municipal entities can then access. As canoe has already completed a public procurement process, the entity just has to declare that they are using the specific canoe program they wish to use, and then may reach out to one or more suppliers approved for the goods the entity wishes to purchase. The Corporate and Residential Services Committee recommends to council that council authorize the C A O to use the canoe procurement supply program to purchase goods and services where the C A O determines that such use provides value to the taxpayer. As chair of the committee, I so move.
Seconded by councillor Mitchell. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. And the motion is passed unanimously.
Fourth item, council remuneration and travel reimbursement policy. The Corporate and Residential Services Committee recommends to council that council approve an amendment to the council remuneration and travel reimbursement policy to reflect a new section dealing with training and development, as attached to the executive committee agenda on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. As chair of the committee, I so move.
Seconded by councillor Dixon. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Motion is passed unanimously. So that concluded Corporate and Residential Services. I'm going to ask council's indulgence, the director of planning does have to leave early tonight, so we're going to jump ahead to the P A C report and then come back to, uh, source water protection, if that's okay. Over to you, councillor Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Warden. The committee held its regular meeting on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, in council chambers. The following motions are coming forward as a result of that meeting. Number one, Plan twenty-three dash zero one one, three two three zero two two five, Nova Scotia Limited Cottage Country Application Update. The municipality received an application in January twenty twenty-four from Cottage Country for M P S and L U B amendments, and to enter a development agreement to permit a bare land condominium development. Since the date of the P I M, which was in April twenty twenty-four, the applicant has retained brighter community planning and consulting. In January twenty twenty-five, the consultant submitted a update to the application and is now requesting just a development agreement to permit approximately three hundred and seventy dwelling units and nine hectares of mixed land, mixed-use land. The Planning Advisory Committee recommends that council authorize staff to schedule a public information meeting to consider an application from three, two three zero two two five, Nova Scotia Limited, which is Cottage Country, to consider entering a development agreement for lands identified as P I D four five one five five three one four, P I D four five four zero three one four four, P I D four five three nine two six zero two, and P I D four five one five five three zero six, to permit a three hundred and seventy dwelling unit bare land condominium development on three hundred and twenty-three hectares of land with mixed-use development, commercial and residential. As chair of the committee, I so move.
Seconded by councillor Hibbs. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Motion is passed unanimously.
Second item, Plan twenty-four dash zero zero three, Talab Webb Application First Reading. Municipalities received an application from Talab Webb requesting to redesignate and rezone properties and lands to enable the construction of two apartment buildings. The Planning Advisory Committee recommends that council refuse the proposal to change the designation and zone of P I D four five zero eight nine three five six, P I D four five zero eight nine three four nine, and a portion of P I D four five zero eight nine four five five from established residential neighborhood designation E R to medium-density residential neighborhood M R designation, and rezone from two dwelling unit residential R two to minus, multiple unit residential R three. As chair of the committee, I so move.
Seconded by councillor Musa. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Motion is passed unanimously.
Plan twenty-five dash zero zero one, Riverstone two fourteen Limited, amendments to M P S and to an existing D A S. The municipality has received an appli- an application from Riverstone two fourteen Limited to amend an existing development agreement which was approved by council in April twenty twenty. Amendments to the municipal planning strategy are needed to enable the amendments to the development agreement. The Planning Advisory Committee recommends that council refuse the application by Riverstone two, two one four Limited to amend the municipal planning strategy and to amend the existing development agreement. As chair of the committee, I so move.
Seconded by councillor Dixon. Before we vote on this motion, councillors, I would remind you that we did have the letter under correspondence for decision from this proponent, uh, just asking if we would consider deferring this decision, so I leave that up to your discretion, and is there anyone wishes to speak to the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, we will go to the vote. And the motion is passed by a vote of nine to two, with councillor Musa and councillor Perry voting nay.
P L N twenty-four dash zero one four, Cal Greg Rezoning Application. The municipality received an application of Cal Greg Enterprise Limited to redesignate and rezone a portion in Belnan from your rural use, R U zone, and designate to cottage residential C R zone and designation. The Planning Advisory Committee recommends to council, that council authorize staff to schedule a public information meeting to consider a proposal for P I Ds four five zero eight six one one three and four five zero eight six zero nine seven to change from rural use zone and designation to the country residential zone and designation. As chair of the committee, I so move.
Seconded by councillor Hibbs. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. And the motion is passed unanimously.
The Planning Advisory Committee recommends to council, that council authorize staff during the upcoming planning review uh, next year, that they add a review of the new roads in the rural use zone, and also review the possibility of having rules regarding onsite parking being required for employees for developments being built. As chair of the committee, I so move.
Seconded by councillor Hibbs. Councillor Perry.
Um, just a question that came up to me after we, we left planning advisory committee. There's various stages of development, right, where you're just cutting the road in, you're, you're, you're doing certain things, and parking might not be an option for a large phase of, of getting development underway, so, uh, just looking for some clarification of, of what, um...
I think that that would come with whatever report staff would do. This motion simply asks staff to address it during the plan review.
Yeah, because there's, there's a lot more to it, uh, uh, at certain stages than just, okay, you're gonna do something, you need to have parking there right away, so, thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Motion is passed unanimously.
The Planning Advisory Committee recommends to council that staff bring back a report outlining the differences between municipal paving standard for private roads and municipally-owned roads. As chair of the committee, I so move.
Seconded by councillor Perry. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. The motion is passed unanimously.
Next item, outdoor event regulations. Due to an event that occurred within East Hans in July twenty twenty-four, a motion was made by council to have staff review the current regulations for both small and large-scale events that occur within the municipality. The following motion was made at P A C and, and staff have further prepared additional information posted with the council agenda. Based on the discussion at P A C, staff have added the proposed amendments as outlined in the attached memo. The Planning Advisory Committee recommends that council give first reading to amend the land use bylaw by amending the definitions of small and large-scale special events and the regulations for large-scale special events to restrict the hours of operation and authorize staff to schedule a public hearing. As chair of the committee, I so move.
Seconded by councillor Marion. And councillors, there was a memo outlining the changes which addressed some of the concerns, I think, or most of the concerns that people had. I'm assuming that everyone had a chance to review that and knows if they're comfortable with that or not. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. And the motion is passed unanimously.
Next item, subdivision, uh, amendments for park road access to adjacent land final report, which was dealt with during the public hearing. Number seven, M G A changes. Recent amendments to the M G A impact a number of processes re- relevant to planning applications, development agreement processing, and site plan approval. As a result, staff prepared a report with corresponding changes to municipal processes that will save applicants and the municipality money, as well as improving efficiency. The Planning Advisory Committee recommends that council give first reading to housekeeping amendments to the municipal planning strategy as outlined in the staff report. M G A changes dated January nine, twenty twenty-five, that use other publications, community newsletters, et cetera, for planning applications and public hearings. Authorize the development officer to approve non-sub- substantive amendments to development agreements and- agreements and to authorize the CAO to discharge development agreements. Planning Advisory Committee further recommends to council, that council authorize staff to schedule a public hearing. As Chair of the Committee, I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Councillor Dixon, is there any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Motion is passed unanimously.
Number eight, UniAC Secondary Planning Strategy Final Report. The Mount UniAC Secondary Planning Strategy was identified as a further project under section E3 Municipal Projects and Studies of the 2023 East Tans Official Community Plan and as part of the 2023-2024 Business Plan for East Tans. Over the past year, consultation has taken place with residents from the Mount, from the UniAC area, and the Planning Advisory Committee has provided staff with direction on a variety of background issues. This process has led to the development of the UniAC Secondary Planning Strategy. The Planning Advisory Committee recommends that council adopt the UniAC Secondary Planning Strategy and authorize staff to incorporate the UniAC Secondary Planning Strategy policy into the East Tans Official Community Plan as part of the 2026 Plan Review. As Chair of the Committee, I so move.
We have a seconder. Seconded by Councillor Hibbs. Councillor Perry.
Yes, I just saw a que- que- question through you, Madam Warden, to staff. A draft copy of this with the amendments that were talked about at Planning Advisory Committee, will that be made available to us? So it could be distributed in the community ahead of the plan review public hearings?
Through you, Madam Warden, absolutely, we can do that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Motion is passed unanimously.
Number nine, duplicate civics on Highway two, one, two, four, two, one, five. On November 20th, 2024, council passed a motion directing staff to have a conversation with staff from West Tans to see if there is anything that can be done about the duplicate numbering on Highway, uh, 215 and any other rural routes that cross municipal boundaries. The Planning Advisory Committee recommends that council direct staff to maintain the current civic addressing process. As Chair of the Committee, I so move.
Seconded by Councillor Hibbs, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Motion is passed unanimously.
Last item, number 10, heritage registration Kennecook Church. An application had received from the Kennecook Cemetery Society to have the church at 4295 Highway 354 Kennecook registered as a heritage municipal heritage building. The Planning Advisory Committee recommends that council direct the municipal clerk to serve a notice of recommendation on the property owners to register 4295 Highway 354 Kennecook as a municipal heritage property, and authorize staff to schedule a hearing to consider the registration of 4295 Highway 354 Kennecook as a heritage, municipal heritage property. As Chair of the Committee, I so move.
Seconded by Councillor Tingley, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Motion is passed unanimously. And that concludes the report, councillor? Okay, so that concludes PAC report. Now we will go back to the East Tans Source Water Protection Advisory Committee report. Over to you, Councillor Garden Cole.
The committee held its regular meeting on April 9th, 2025 electronically via Zoom. The following items were discussed: selection of chairperson and vice chairperson. Councillor Sandra Garden Cole be appointed as chairperson for the East Tans Source Water Protection Advisory Committee, with Councillor Cecil Dixon appointed to serve as vice chairperson. Love Your Lake, Kelly Schneer ReImaging Atlantic Harbors presented in Love Your Lake via PowerPoint presentation. The presentation detailed an NGO that pairs with local grassroots organizations to perform lakefront property assessments. These assessments evaluate the present environment and provides recommendations on different ways that the homeowner could have a more environmentally friendly shoreline, such as allowing natural vegetation to grow and removing any existing retaining walls or riprap and allowing a natural shoreline to form. This presentation stimulated further questions and discussions specific to what lakes have already been assessed in the surrounding municipalities, on how community engagement was achieved, and the lack of funding provided by the provincial or federal government for these types of assessments. Grand Lake has been selected as one of the lakes for 2025. Vacant Lot Highway 2 Fall River. Mr. Sean Harris provided an update that there is still not an active application currently on a vacant lot at 3061 Highway 2 Fall River, which was purchased by a developer in 2024 and is located on Lake Thomas. The municipality will continue to monitor its status since development could have an impact on the Grand Lake watershed. Heavy Rainfall at Aerotech Connector. Mr. Sean Harris provided an update on the heavy rainfall incident that occurred between March 31st and April 1st at the Aerotech Connector construction site. During this period, heavy rainfall caused significant amounts of sediment in the rain runoff at a Dexter construction staging near exit 5A. Consultants for the Department of Public Works were on site during and after the rainfall and noted that no sediment was identified leaving the site. Dexter Construction was aware of the issue and took action to correct the sediment release. 2024 Source Water Protection Results. Mr. Sean Harris presented and discussed the source water sampling results from 2024 for Grand Lake and Chibinakity. For Grand Lake, there were concerns with total coliform spikes. Total coliform at SWPP number three and SWPP number four during the June and July sampling events resulted in the highest values. These elevated results lowered during the August sampling event and were similar to 2023 results. There was an update on a prior discussion on tracking pH and the accuracy of lab results compared to onsite sampling. At this time, the difference in the results is not a concern for staff. Grand Lake Watershed and Wetland Intersection. Ms. Chelsea McPherson shared a map of the existing Grand Lake watershed delineation and where it intersected with the exiting wetlands. This data came from a study that was done in Cape Breton and was brought to the attention of East Tans. Mr. Barry Gettis questioned the data used for the existing Grand Lake delineation. As he noted, it appears to be different than what Halifax Water uses. This will be further investigated. Chibinakity PW 2024 Update. Ms. Chelsea McPherson shared a map of the previously drilled wells around the Chibinakity Water Treatment Plant. Due to reoccurring sedimentation issues, PW1 was previously replaced with PW 2019, and PW2 is now being replaced with PW 2024, which is scheduled to be in production this May. The future of TW 2024, which did not produce enough water, is still being discussed. There are no motions coming forward as a result of this meeting.
Thank you. We will now move to the Infrastructure and Operations Committee. Councillor Perry.
Thank you, Madam Warden. The committee held its regular meeting on April 15th, 2025, and the following motion is coming forward as a result of those meetings. Nova Scotia Extended Producer Responsibility for Packaging, Printed Paper and Packaging Like Products. In August 2023, the province of Nova Scotia amended the Environment Act to add extended producer responsibility for packaging and paper. This has been a request from municipalities for many years, moving the responsibility, the cost, and end marketing to those that create the products. The province has designated Divert Nova Scotia as the oversight body for this program. The Infrastructure and Operations Committee recommends that council authorize the CAO to negotiate final terms of the curbside collection services contract with Circular Materials as part of the Nova Scotia Extended Producer Responsibility for Packaging, Printed Paper, and Packaging Like Products, EPR, for PPP regulations. As Chair of the Committee, I so move.
Seconded by Councillor Hibbs, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. And the motion is passed unanimously. Um, I'm assuming this concludes the report.
Yeah. As Chair of the Committee, I-
We understand that we no longer have to move acceptance of the reports. I just ask the chairs that when you finish, if you would just add the phrase, "And this concludes my report," that allows us to move smoothly into the next report.
No problem, Warden. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Moving forward into Parks, Recreation and Culture Committee Report, over to you, Councillor Rhino.
Thank you, Madam Warden. The committee held its regular meeting on April 15th, 2025, and the following motions are coming forward as a result of that meeting. 2025 Tourism Grants. Tourism Grants Program provides a single-year financial support to nonprofit community-based organizations whose purpose is to operate a tourism attraction or facility in East Tans. Applications closed on February 28th, 2025, and were then reviewed by the Staff Grant Review Committee, and were all found to be eligible under the Tourism Grant Policy. So from that, the Parks, Recreation and Culture Committee recommend to council that council, that the Tourism Grant Funding Recommendations totaling $15,250 be approved for the following organizations: East Tans Historical Society, $11,200; the Walton Area Development Association, $4,050; and that staff release approved funds as confirmation of external funding sources for the proposed projects and operations are received from each group. As Chair of the Committee, I do so move.
Seconded by Councillor Mitchell, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. And the motion is passed unanimously.
Madam Warden, that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our committee reports for this evening. I would now ask the deputy warden to take the chair, and I would present my warden's report.
Go ahead, Warden.
Okay, and I left my notes at home, so I kind of quickly tried to jot everything I could remember down here. On the 28th of March, I, along with some staff members and other members of council, attended a tour of the RCMP H Division. Um, I had been on one a number of years ago, and it certainly was just as interesting as, as I remembered, and a few updated things, and certainly impressive to see what our, what is included. I know policing is a very expensive part of our budget, but sometimes it's just good to see everything that we get for those dollars that we spend on policing that's available should we ever need it. On, uh, April the 10th, I attended the senior safety workshop put on by the municipality at the Elmsdale Fire Department. It was the first one that was held and seemed to be quite well attended, and the folks who were present did seem to, uh, did seem to be interested and engaged and enjoying it. On the 13th of April, I was pleased to attend a 100th birthday celebration for Mrs. Nettie Baron and present her with a certificate on behalf of the municipality on reaching that milestone, and I can only hope that, uh, if I make it to that, that I'm half as active and, uh, alert as Mrs. Baron is. That's, she's an amazing lady. On the 16th, I attended virtually the NSFM Zoom meeting to update us on the coastal protection information that they are sharing. I did take the opportunity, although I didn't beat a dead horse to death, to suggest to them that they could simply declare their own legislation that they passed and draw some other things to their attention, but, uh, I don't foresee any great changes coming as a result of that. On the 17th of April, I attended the, uh, business breakfast put on by the municipality in the East Tans Chamber of Commerce at the Sportsplex. It was well attended by a number of local businesses, some from even the faraway, the Mount UniAC Business Park were in attention, were in attendance, and, uh, the CAO gave an excellent report outlining, uh, our budget and, uh, projects upcoming in, in the new year, and it was very well received. Also, on the 17th, I then, of course, along with the rest of council, attended the climate change workshop here at the municipal building. There were other events throughout the month, uh, within the community that I was out in a boat, uh, and, uh, I won't try to list them all individually, but, so, that is my report. Mr. Deputy Warden.
Okay, back to you, Warden.
Thank you. So we'll go to business from councillors, and I'm going to start with Councillor Tingley.
Uh, through the chair. Okay, on, uh, March 31st, Councillor Dixon and I met with MLA John McDonald at his office to discuss a few matters. April 8th, attended Codwell Roach 60th Anniversary Celebration at the Nook and Cranny in Truro. It's well attended. April 11th, attended an ICLR webinar about enhancing flood and climate resilience in Canada, was basically about managed retreat and hot home biotes. That was pretty informative. April 14th, uh, attended Department of Municipal Affairs Monthly Training. This month, uh, training was about Land Planning 101 in general by Christina Lovett. These training sessions take about an hour, and they're usually at a convenient time of day, uh, for me, anyway. April 15th, uh, attended, uh, an NSFM Infrastructure Committee meeting. This was just an introduction to this committee for me. One thing I quickly learned is, uh, we don't want to take over provincial roads. April 17th, uh, attended the Climate Action Plan Workshop with other councillors. Presenter Alex Cadell with Climate Atlantic, also an employee of the province. I'll just mention that I met, met a lady through Climate Atlantic. I went to one of their workshops last year from Lance. And at that, that time, she was, uh, doing, uh, climate adaptation for the Nova Scotia halter, halter culture. I recently learned that she's now employed as a flood, uh, adaptation facilitator, facilitator at NSFM. She's resident at Lance. April 19th, uh, attended the Milford Lions Big Breakfast, uh, with, uh, Councillors Hibbs and Merriam, and, uh, MLA John McDonald attended as well, uh, to serve up breakfast. Approximately 330 people attended. One thing I learned at this breakfast is that National Gypsum has been donating all the meat, sausage, ham, and bacon for this event since it started decades ago, which is about $1,000 a year, which I thought was pretty good. That's about it for me.
Councillor Musa.
Uh, thank you, Madam Warden. We just have had a new chief in the fire department this, this year, and I could tell you, there's the workload and burnout like from their regular job for those volunteers taking a big toll on them, and I want to thank them for everything they do for our communities. This past month, I have never in my eight years received many, as many calls and emails about, uh, any road in, in Mount UniAC, but this year, Lake Crest is something that the province should be ashamed of. That road, you cannot go on it more than five. Like, if you go more than five, you break your car. All the delivery people, even Amazon, uh, the regular mail, anything is stopped delivering on that road. And I can, I can believe in, in case of emergency, what's going to happen there, because it take you, uh, two kilometer road, I drive on it almost every day, it take you at least 15 minutes to go from one end to the other. And if you go more than five, you're done. Your car is done, won't make it. So, I don't know what we should do Jesse there, because it's not just road condition, it's an emergency. I, I think the Emergency Act should be involved here, or, because every, every email I get was CC to the MLA and Public Work. They were sending, uh, the emails to Public Work, and they CC me and, uh, MLA McDonald, and nothing happened in a month. That is unacceptable, I think. I don't know if any other road in the municipality is like that, but this road, I've never seen any road in my 30 years in Canada like that. It's crazy. If I tell you like 100,000 potholes, I'm not- like 100,000 potholes, I'm not exaggerating. So do you need a motion, Jesse, or...
Well, Jesse?
Through you, Madam Warden. A motion to, for staff to seek an update on the maintenance plan for Lake Crest may be an option. An alternative option would be to write an official letter to the province advocating concerns.
For safety, most.
For safety and articulating that. I think that would be more official, if it was an official letter, and it would be public-facing, and it would go to the appropriate provincial elected officials. I think that might be your best option, as counsel.
Because a letter to Public Works is not doing anything. So I think we should do, as Calvin, we had a meeting in the other room the other day, and Calvin said, any road that cause like, 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 safety issue for people should be addressed, and he could do something about it. So I don't know if you or him, or, but something's got to be done about that road.
So would you like to make a motion that Jesse and Calvin collaborate on sending a letter to the appropriate people requesting action for safety concerns on Lake Crest?
Is that good with you?
And should, would you like that to go, a copy go to the minister?
I'd like to copy the Minister of Emergency, whatever Kim mentioned before. I don't know what, EMO or something, or in charge of, because it's unacceptable what's happening there.
CAO?
Through you, Madam Warden. So are you looking for a letter from council to the minister? Or are you looking for a letter from staff to the...
Whichever staff think is best.
I think Jesse was referring to a letter from council to the minister.
Okay.
Yeah.
Whatever is more, most effective.
And we have a seconder.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Perry. Okay, Counselor Rhino.
Thank you, Madam Warden. It's true, you two, Counselor. I was just wondering if Counselor Musa has been in touch with the MLA, because, I mean, there's those where a lot of issues with roadways and things like that, issues lay. So I'm just wondering if he has correspondence with the MLA?
I won't lie to you. I didn't, but I will. But I don't see him responding to any of the letters, to any of the emails, so I don't think he's interested in doing anything. That's honestly.
You may not, were the letters copied to the MLA?
Everyone. They were sent to the MLA, and I was copied on. Unless he is removing, if he's removing me from his emails, that means he doesn't want to talk to me.
It could be as simple as he's just hitting reply and not reply all as well. I've done that myself. Anything else, Counselor Rhino?
No.
Counselor Dixon.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I guess this is similar to what we discussed earlier. We have other roads in the community that we have to look at, like in infield Budland Acres. People are complaining like that. Waiting for Culvert, which was supposed to be put in last year. Now they're telling us this June. And Counselor Ting and I both met with our MLA. These topics were brought up, and I have not seen anything changed since then. So I think the letter, if possible, should include most of the non-paved roads in the community.
Probably right, but I think if we make it too broad, we lose. This is a particular letter to the minister on this issue. Certainly able to send another letter to other specific roads if needed.
I'll buy that one.
Anything else, Counselor?
No, thank you.
Counselor Tingley.
Chair, just a suggestion, and maybe this happens. When we set off these letters, can we send photographs, like Counselor Musa is describing the situation with this road? And if it's that bad, you know, picture, you know, tells the whole story type of thing. I'd suggest submitting pictures with it.
There was autograph with the...
No, but if, my point is, if staff are writing, I think they should have good photographs.
Jesse?
Through you, Madam Warden. I know need to modify the motion. Staff will just add photos. Likely going to target Monday, because we're going to get a lot of rain here on the weekend, so that'll be the day.
Counselor Perry.
Speaking in support of the motion, I myself live not on that road, but close to that area, and I've had a number of residents call me directly to ask what's going on, what can be done. They've contacted the Public Works hotline. They've sent emails. They've emailed the MLA, and they've got no response from anybody. And this has not been something they've done for a week. This has been ongoing now for over two months that they've been doing this, since the snow came off the roads, even when the snow was on the roads. And talking to the fire service, they, there are some members who live down that road, and it is a safety issue, because if somebody is injured, and they have a spinal injury, and they have to come out of there, that, there's no way to avoid anything. Like, we're talking eight-inch potholes completely covering the road for kilometers on kilometers. It is, I've never seen anything like this on any road, and there are other horrible roads in my district, but nothing compared to this road at this moment. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Motion is passed unanimously. Anything else, Counselor Musa?
Yes, Madam Warden. I already talked, I probably guessed that John is not going to be here, so I talked to him about this motion, and he drafted for me, so I think he'll be okay. So I move that staff be directed to review subdivision regulation through the 2026 Plan Review to give the municipality more control over where road reserved to adjoining property are located. And the reason I'm doing this motion, because right now it's in the hand of the developer, same as they used to give us wetland for open space. Now they could put the road connection anywhere they want, and I think the municipality should have the discretion where those connections are best to suit the municipality for future development.
We have a seconder.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Perry. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Motion is passed unanimously.
That's it for me, Madam Warden. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Perry.
Thank you, Madam Warden. It's been a busy month. I attended the Uniac District Volunteer Firefighter Awards Night. It was held at the Sandman Hotel. Great buffet dinner put on, well-attended. The awards, number of calls for service, they had over 4,700 hours of responses in the last year, and the stats were utterly shocking to see how much a small volunteer department does. As Counselor Musa mentioned earlier, Chief Sean Darby has stepped down. We have a new chief, Chief Frazier, and a new deputy chief, Chief Kingston. And I also would like to extend my thanks to the outgoing Chief Darby and Deputy Chief Raymakers for all their efforts they've done in the last year, and welcome in the new chief, deputy chief, and their executive. I attended the library board meeting last night. Lots of great things coming out of that. There is going to be a gala tentatively for October, which is going to celebrate the 75th anniversary of the Colchester East Hans Library Association. Doing, dealing with the libraries to raise awareness of funding. I've been, as my position as board chair, going with the chief librarian around, visiting all the MLAs that feed into the Colchester East Hans Library, and letting them know what the libraries do for the public. It's not just books and, you know, rented DVDs or computer access, the programming, the social programs, all this stuff that's been happening. I believe we have the presentation coming for our chief librarian here in the near future, so I won't go any more detail on that. This Saturday is the kickoff of events, so the way it's done, there's going to be an official gala held in Truro at the Truro Library. That'll be a ticketed event. But at all of the library branches throughout the year, they're going to have events kickoff. So the first one that's happening is in Mount Uniac this weekend from 10 to 12. At the Mount Uniac Library, there will be cake. There'll be a few other things, games and stuff for kids and everybody to turn out. There's also a East Coast award-winning traditional folk artist, folk musician that is going to play at all of the branch events. So she'll be there with her accordion and guitar, and there'll be some music and some other things. So anybody that wants to pop out for that on Saturday between 10 and 12, it'd be a great event to take your children, grandchildren, too. There is one scheduled for Elmsdale later on. Moving on, I also attended Climate Change Workshop. I met with members of the Canadian Winter Swimming Association. It's a new organization here in Canada that deals with cold-water swimming. I've linked them up with staff. They're looking to possibly maybe host a future event in our municipality in the future. More to come on that as that progresses. The Legion has expressed a huge thank you for the municipality, for the donation of the two flagpoles, as it moved forward with the new Senate half. I also like to extend my personal thanks, and the thanks of our residents go out to the West Hans Search and Rescue and residents of Lakeland who conducted a search operation for a missing person. Unfortunately, that person was found deceased, but the operation went on and was well-coordinated, and there was a lot of community involvement, as he was a member who grew up in the community and many people knew. Advanced poll turnout has been huge in Mount Uniac. You were looking on Friday, you were between a half-hour and 40-minute wait to vote, which was great. Unfortunately, I did miss the RCMP presentation and tour. I've been on it before, but I attended the reopening of Big East Pub in Mount Uniac, which reopened after devastating fire. Their dishwasher caught fire and took out their entire kitchen, bar area. A local businessperson actually shut his business down for three weeks and put all three of his work crews on it to have them up and running again within three weeks. So kudos to that. Kudos to the staff. They reopened. They, and in doing so, they've remodeled, so it's a completely different look if you ever pop in. I do have two motions that I am going to bring forward tonight. One of these stems from my time at the fire awards night. I was approached by a few firefighters, and this is a motion I'll bring forward. I move to contact the Department of Public Works to lower the speed limit on Etter Road from 70 kilometers an hour to 60 kilometers an hour. I so move.
We have a seconder. Seconded by Counselor Musa. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Motion is passed unanimously.
And the last thing I have on tap for right now, I have one resident who tried to do the right thing. Came in the municipality and wanted to apply for a permit to renovate their basement into an accessory dwelling for their aging parent. And because their lot size, it was an older lot. It was an undersized lot, as we already have it on the books for the 2026 Plan Review, to be looked at, they were told, no, they cannot create an in-law suite in their existing home based on our current regulations. So this is not an issue with staff. This is an issue with us here in council, because we create the rules, staff enforces them. So I believe that we need to, like we did for the prefabricated homes, for the residents that had them ready to go and were denied in other parts of the municipality, we need to look at and address this sooner. We cannot wait to 2026, which will lead into 2027 by the time that plan is adopted, when we have residents that are trying to put their parents or family members in their homes where they already have space. It's not building anything new. It's in their existing home and dwelling. They're not allowed, if it's an undersized lot. They're not allowed to put it on top of their garage, even the space that already existed. All they have to do is do the plumbing and do conversion. They are not allowed by our current regulations. Now, I don't want to tell people, just go do it anyway, because that's not what we should be doing here as a council, but we should be giving them, when people come in and they try and do the right thing, we have to react and make it available to them. So I'm going to move for undersized lots, ability to have accessory dwellings onsite providing their septic and water capacity.
Excuse, I'd like some clarification. Are you asking for a staff report on this? Are you asking us to change policy with no staff?
I'm, no, no. I'm asking for a staff report to come back on that, and I'd like to have it, if possible, by next executive, because this is something that I know of, one family that's contacted me, and I know of two other families that have tried previously and were denied as well in my area. So this is something where, you know, they're trying to get their parents out of paying double mortgage rents in places right now and have them closer to home, and this is something that our regulations and our bylaws do not allow.
And understanding that next executive is three weeks away.
Three weeks away.
It may be next executive, but it could be the one after that.
I would hope we could get that done rather quickly. I have been talking to the Director of Planning on this, so hopefully we should be able to put something together.
So it's moved and seconded. Okay, Counselor Garden Cole.
Thank you, Madam Warden. So just to clarify, you didn't mention, but do you mean in an instance such as this, where it is within what's the building that is already there? Or do you mean possibly like a structure built outside?
I mean, if they can meet, for undersized lots, if they can meet the setbacks for a secondary structure, and their septic and water source meet the criteria, they should be able to put it in their home above their garage or wherever, like they are able to do on other lots. The setbacks will remain regardless of whether it's an undersized lot or an acre lot. And like, we're talking about the difference of, in our regulations, you need one acre. So if you have .9 acre, you cannot put an accessory dwelling on your property, or you cannot modify your current home. That's part of the problem that we're having with our current regulations, because we tied it to lot size and not actual capacity for what can be handled, especially in the unserviced area, because your septic environment will determine how many bedrooms you can have in your septic system. So in the serviced area, there is no restriction on lot size because it's serviced. So...
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Rhino.
Maybe, maybe, I'm a little bit confused. So what you're asking for is just not building on, just renovating to make it an access, to make it accessible for an in-law suite in a basement or upstairs, not building on that.
I think, I think he's asking for a review of what's allowed on undersized lots for accessory units, whether they be part of the existing buildings or...
Or an addition?
An addition or another unit, but they would still have to meet all the setbacks and everything. He's asking for a staff report to look at that.
I'd be interested to see what holds us back on that, but in all support.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Motion is passed unanimously.
And thank you for that, and that's all I have for tonight, Warden. Thank you.
Counselor Mario.
Great, thank you. No, I agree. It's been a busy past month. We've, as council members, there's been a lot of activities we've done together. I also was at the Caldwell Roach 60th Anniversary at Nook and Cranny. I got there a little bit later, so I might have missed Counselor Tingley, who was there as well. On March 28th, I also attended the RCMP H Division Tour, which... On March twenty eighth, I also attended the RCMP H Division Tour, which was very interesting just to see everything that they have to offer there. It was quite enlightening. I also attended a public information meeting on village core density on April first. I attended the Climate Engagement Workshop on April seventeenth. I also volunteered at the Lions Breakfast this past weekend on April the nineteenth, and as well dealing with various constituency initiatives. Thank you.
Deputy Warden McPhee.
Thank you, Warden. Due to the important sporting event that's happening, I'm going to cut my report down a little bit. So just ten minutes of the things the other councillors have, I'd just like to mention that we had another meeting of the Haydays Committee, and we have a few new volunteers, and things are moving along, and we'll still need a few more people for the day of the event. I also attended a visitation for the late Phyllis McPhee, a longtime resident of North Salem, it was a very big crowd. Yes, I have a few issues that I've been dealing with for several residents, and I would like to thank Nova Scotia Public Works for tending to a shoulder repair out in Mill Village that I brought to their attention. They got there quite promptly, had it done before the long weekend, which was great. And also, if any members of District, residents of District Four have any issues concerning the roads, I do have a meeting with the MLA this coming Monday to address some of those. So if anybody's listening and wants to send me something, I'll be glad to bring it up with them. Thank you.
Councillor Head.
Thank you, Warden. April first, I attended the Public Information Meeting, and on the ninth, I chaired the Harvard Land Wind Tower Meeting where the devoting funds is available. On the seventeenth, I attended the Climate Change Meeting here, seminar, and attended several breakfasts throughout the municipality, East Gore, White Settlement, Noel, and at the breakfast in Milford. And I have gained some weight. Thank you.
Councillor Dixon.
As well as other councillors, I went to the RCMP Tour, which again was very interesting. Attended the East Hans Water Source Committee Meeting. Also went to our councillor Tingley, we met with our MLA John over some issues, and Rhodes was part of that meeting. Attended the East Hans Community Rider Meeting, and the Climate, Council Climate Workshop was interesting as well. Continue to meet every Friday with CCOA, we have a special committee on the building, and we're hoping to be in the new building in maybe June. What do you think? We're hoping. So on there. Still talking with people at Arrowhead Park, we're trying to think of fire smart communities, so some ideas, and hopefully in June, they'll have something to present to everybody. And a lot of calls on the roads, we beat that to pieces already tonight, I think Jesse's heard enough, so continue on. The only one positive thing, East Hans Junior Sea, Rice and Constructions are the provincial champs, and they will be going this weekend to Island Barrington Passage for the Maritime Junior Sea Championship. So it's one junior sea team, or junior team that's representing East Hans well, and I can't make the first two games, but I'll be there for the championship game on Sunday. Thank you, Madam Warden.
Councillor Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Warden. A busy month of being open to vote, once I got back from vacation. I attended the federal candidate's debate in Enfield on the fifteenth. Didn't get a chance to register for the business breakfast, but I went up anyway, and there was lots of room.
That's why there was no bacon left.
I enjoyed the presentation by the CEO, and also enjoyed the Climate Engagement Workshop that evening. Last evening, we had the library board meeting, and funding is a big issue for all libraries across the province, and it hasn't been changed in the last probably ten years. I completed yesterday the Code of Conduct training with the help from my son Patrick and also NSCC staff, because I got bogged down, and technology on the phone isn't one of my strong suits. I continue to get emails from four twenty seven, Highway two fourteen about their project. I was at the Rath Centre yesterday and happened to run into an employee of divert Nova Scotia, and she was impressed that I knew something about the extended producer responsibility for packaging printed paper and packaging-like products. Following up on Council Paris about the library's seventy-fifth anniversary, it's scheduled for October the eighteenth, so you can mark it on your calendar in Truro. And a reminder to councillors, the volunteer awards and firefighter long service award ceremony is next Friday, May second, in Noel and District Fire Hall. Six o'clock for the reception and six thirty for the dinner. And that's all, Madam Warden. Oh, no, one last item. Before I went away, I presented Kowal Roach with a certificate celebrating their sixth year anniversary, and they have decided to display the certificate in the Elmsdale office. And that's all.
Councillor Gardin call.
Thank you, Madam Warden. It has been a busy month, either with things that we're attending and also with lots of communication with residents of my district and surrounding districts. So I attended the Source Water Protection Committee Meeting and also Corridor Community Options. As councillor Dixon mentioned, we're working towards getting into the new facility there. It's all hands on deck for that. I would like to take this time to express my condolences to the family of John Canning, a local resident from Enfield who passed away suddenly this month. It's a huge loss for his family, obviously, but also for the community of East Hans. We recognized John recently for his work in the volunteer capacity. He was the president of Corridor Minor Ball and was a phenomenal advocate for ball in the community and in surrounding communities, because Corridor Minor Ball, as we know, is right up through the municipality. So it's a huge loss for everybody and really sad. So my condolences to his family and to our communities who are really going to feel his loss. I received numerous emails of thanks from District Recreation Fund recipients, who were all very appreciative of the funds that they were allocated. I wanted to talk about, I sent a picture to the councillors so they would know what I was referring to. I had a resident bring this up in conversation at the grocery store, actually, and I've been kind of looking since then. The new apartment building going up by the Magnolia has its propane tank, which is surrounded by, and I know John isn't here, it's surrounded by chain link, yes, balusters and also chain link fence. This is something that you typically is located on the sides of apartment buildings, so you might not notice them or realize that they're there. This one has been placed in the very front, a short distance between the apartment building and the sidewalk. Yes, that's the picture. Anyway, it's just, it's kind of, they refer to it as unsightly, and I don't know, we obviously don't have any rules or regulations about where these might be placed in relation to the apartment buildings, but it's just something that I would like staff to check into, whether it could be a recommendation that if all possible, that they could be placed on the side or not quite so front and center. And as I say, John isn't here to talk about that, but maybe it's something that we could bring up with staff. And finally, talk about beating a dead horse, but I cannot, I had that many people contact me that I cannot not bring this up in my district, and that is the condition of the number two highway between Enfield and Elmsdale, and also the number two fourteen from the Elmsdale Square heading up towards Sobies. And this just isn't pothole issue. This is an issue where there is tons of heavy trucks, you know, going to the Mills, going to Coopers, going to Shaw's, and all the development that's going on. So these big trucks are, I'll blame it on them, because I don't know who else, the sides of the roads are crumbling, and that means that truck tires go off it, or else people, or else regular cars go off the sides, and then it's all beat down in the shoulders. So then you've got these big ruts and puddles in the gravel on the shoulders of the roads, as well as the broken crumbling sides. So it's not just a pothole issue that we're experiencing. This is probably one of the busiest roads in the municipality, and when I spoke to a supervisor from Department of, from Public Works, they said that they had no significant repairs to do on that section of the road in their five-year plan, that the only thing they had a plan to do would be just doing what they're doing, which is basically, we talked about cold, cold, what, cold?
Cold patch.
Cold patch and filling in potholes. Sometimes you'll see them with a truck and literally five gallon containers, putting them in potholes and that kind of thing. And they don't have any, I mean, with the amount of traffic on that road and what's going to be on that road, I just feel like it's, like they need to have a plan, something coming up, certainly within five years. I'm not talking about resurfacing at all, but at least to have sections of repair done, not just this filling cold patch in these holes. And the other thing, when talking about the ditch by the Cup of Soul that's been plugged for weeks, and I had a few people reach out to me about that, the supervisor said that, well, their trucks don't get switched out till the end of April, so there's nothing that they can do with that kind of repair until the end of April. So my question is, with climate change, with the warmer winters and things that are changing, if, you know, if maybe a truck or two, I'm assuming that they're talking about, and maybe one of, someone who knows more about me than Public Works on the council here, or staff can elaborate on, does that mean that the plows come off and different things go on the trucks to change out the gear so that they can start? I know that big paving doesn't happening until, you know, May through December or something, but what changes that makes them have to wait until the end of April to do these kind of repairs?
Deputy Warden has asked to weigh in on this one.
No, I thought I did.
I thought you did.
Yeah.
Thank you, Warden. Yes, technically, they're right, but you have to put pans in to protect the chains that deliver the salt sand. So that's something you can do. It takes an hour, let's say. Takes time to take them back out, you have to put the trucks out in the road in a hurry for a snowstorm or something. I think we're probably safe there. And you have to take wings off, drop wings, the front plows, the fronts for the plows stay on regardless, or a lot of the equipment does. So those would be the three big things that they have to do in order to use them. So they certainly should be available to them to use, I would think.
Well, the thing of it is, when it comes to that ditch that's been plugged right up to the top for weeks, I just, and also, there's a side there as well, close to there that has a, that is that deep now, that a pylon that is that tall is flush with the top of it, that's how deep it is. I mean, a child could fall in there walking, and they'd be in trouble and we'd be in trouble. So to pass it off as, yeah, we can't fix these kind of things that have been there for months because they haven't changed their equipment out yet, that just doesn't fly. I just don't think that's right. I think they must have to have some kind of equipment to deal with things that aren't just ordinary issues, and that's not an ordinary issue as far as I'm concerned. So I don't know if I'm, I was going to make another motion. I know there's already been motions made to the Department of Highways, they're going to start a file for us, but I'm really, I really feel like, okay. Jesse? Is there any point, and what I'm looking for is, I'm hoping that there's going to be some more significant repairs done to Highway two between Enfield and Elmsdale, and from the two fourteen from the Elmsdale Square up towards Sobies in the next five years. Like, that seems very dismal to me, that they're just going, and as I say, not just potholes, but say along Daw McNeals and that side of the road heading towards Elmsdale from Enfield, it's just broken shoulder, not shoulder, broken the edge of the pavement, and then it results in big ruts in the shoulder. It's all the way along that stretch. If cars go off there, you're done.
Comments, Jesse?
Well, that's. Through Madam Warden. First off, agreed, very bad situations. There's a few tactics that I would recommend. There's, there is an in-person opportunity where council is going to be able to engage MLAs. They're coming to a upcoming executive committee meeting, so know that that's coming in the coming months. So that may be one opportunity to bring that topic in general. So we've got several road topics. It might be a united effort that council chooses to take advantage of that platform to discuss. If you were to make a motion on the general area just described, Public Works has recently done a study about future, projecting out future road improvement needs along the two fourteen from the one oh two to the two, and then along Highway two from the two fourteen to Old Enfield Road. And that was all around growth. And if council were to write a letter to the minister referencing that letter and improvements and looking for some of those improvements listed in that study to be expedited based on the deteriorating conditions of the road, given those examples you just described, I think that might be a way to use data to get more action and trigger it versus just a one-off example.
Yeah.
I think that might be an out-of-the-box approach that might be, might be the best approach to reference that in a letter. It's data-driven, it's a report that the province asked for and has in hand, and we could leverage that fact that that was done to potentially get some work done.
Okay, so maybe it would be timely then to do that. Gosh.
I want to say that was the Griffin Report.
That was, okay, so run that by me again.
So if it was the will of council, you could make a motion to write a letter to the Minister of Transportation requesting that improvements in the general area of the recently completed Griffin Report be added to the five-year capital plan for improvements based on excessive road deterioration that's already being experienced, so don't wait for the population to trigger the improvements when the road's already falling apart.
Okay.
So moved?
Oh, yeah, if I can.
I just said that because I think I saw staff writing while Jesse was.
Well, I had the first half to the Griffin Report. Yeah, if I can, that would be great. And just for clarification, I realize that Public Works is provincial, it's provincially, it's, you know, it's provincial-wide, they have their districts, they don't go by municipality though, right? They go, you know, there's a district that's, okay, because, and I'm sure that they all allocate their own, have their own funds and allocate differently. I mean, when, I live in Enfield, when I look at how many times the road between the Scale House and Enfield down to Wellington has been resurfaced in the past twenty years, I'm going to say three. It's unbelievable, the amount of pavement that they have put on that road in the past twenty years over and over again. I just don't understand how they justify where they're paving, but anyway, that's another issue. Okay.
Discussion to the motion.
That's it, I'm done.
Okay, to the motion, councillor Dixon. Okay. You're going to wait till after the motions, don't we? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Motion is passed unanimously. Anything further, Counselor Gerdko?
That's it, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Dixon, in relation to...
I know every time we have a positive, there's always some negatives, but I think at a conference I was in Vancouver years ago, I think it was Timas, Ontario, had a similar problem with major roads, and they went to concrete, very expensive, but I believe they said it lasted 27 years, as opposed to just doing it every several years. That might be something that we could look into, further dates or at different times, see if it might be feasible. Very expensive.
They did do a piece in the Windsor area, between Windsor and Sackville, a number of years ago.
Yeah, so I don't know, that's something that would be considered, but that report was, well, it's probably 12 years old, it might be interesting to look it up and see what's happened since then. Just information, thank you.
Counselor Rhino.
Well, I must say, I kind of feel a little beat up tonight talking about Public Works and everything, but anyway, that's one way or another. Anyway, first off, last, the last business from councilors, I had a problem with the digital radar sign that was in Maitland. I'm pleased to say that that was taken out very shortly, and I was, I must apologize to Director Jessie Halsman, I was a little upfront and strict in my tone, and I apologize for that. I shouldn't have been. Second, and with the road discussions, I had been in discussions with the MLA on various gravel roads in District Five, you know, to name a few. They're very similar to what I've heard around this table today. So anyway, he says he's going away and tried to work on some of them, and I have to take the MLA at his word on that. During the month, I attended brunches at the Little White Hall, breakfast at the Knoll Fire Hall, and strange, at both of them, I saw Counselor Heb there, so, you know, we're kind of both watching our weight there on that one, so, anyway, for a good cause...
Wendy was on vacation for a while.
Good cause. Then I attended a play at High Tides Community, and also, I attended a meeting of the Walton District Development Association meeting during the month, and on April the first, I, well, I must say, I attended church and it didn't fall down, and after the church service, there was a reception underneath, and I had the great pleasure to present Betty Miller of Knoll Shore with the 90th birthday certificate. And you talk about somebody that can go, that lady is still going, she can organize, and she can do, she's just a great lady, and she'll, she's so much of a valuable to the community in the area. On last Sunday, on the 22nd, or the 20th, I presented Ralph Brown of Burnt Coat with his 90th certificate, keeps very active, it is wooden, it's garden, and we had a great conversation. And last evening, I had two presentations. I presented Clarence Reynolds of Tana Cape, former bus driver, known along the shore, with his 85th certificate. And also last night, I presented Diane Laffin of Moosebrook with her 80th. So longevity along the shore, and I hope it keeps going. So those are basically the month in short form for me. Thank you.
All right, okay. Councilors, it is 9:35, but I'm going to go first to Counselor Mitchell and then to Counselor Musa.
Yeah, just a quick question through Jessie. The two fourteen by the Royal Bank that was repaired with the water break, any idea when that, the washboard will be straightened out, so just a quick comment?
Yep, through Madam Warden, so that is the responsibility of the water utility, go back and repair. We've been waiting for spring waits to be lifted and asphalt plants to open. We're anticipating all of that to happen next week. And the staff, it's priority one for when we start gearing up and doing permanent repairs. So in the coming weeks, it's going to be rectified.
Counselor Musa?
Madam Warden, after looking at my emails, I want to take all that I said about MLA McDonald, because I think my resident went all the way to the Minister of Public Work. So if the minister saw those pictures and he didn't act, I send pictures to everybody, so you can look in your email and see the condition, and if the minister didn't even look at it, or somebody in his staff, so something wrong there. And that's part of the reason I ask Jessie all the time, that we should take care of our own municipal road everywhere in the municipality, not counting on somebody else to do our road. Thank you.
We don't want to own provincial roads. Okay, that concludes business from councilors. We do have an in-camera session scheduled to discuss a contractual issue, so I would be looking for a motion to go in camera. Moved by Counselor Tingley, seconded by Counselor Musa, or Counselor Mitchell. All those in favor? Contrary, motion is carried. We'll give staff time to take us in camera. We are back online. I would report that we met in camera to discuss a contractual issue and direction was given to the CAL. That concludes the business, except for setting the date and time of the next council meeting, May 13th, 2025, for the regular meeting of council for policy, and in camera, and May 21st, 2025, regular meeting of councils. Someone prepared to move those dates?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion is carried. That concluding the business before us, I will declare our motion, our meeting adjourned.